Are we ready to begin?
Yep. I'll go ahead with the roll call.
Yes, please.
Gregory Wolf.
Here.
David Baderas.
Here.
Brad Miller. Is absent. Lindsey Gressay.
Here.
Brad Starrett.
Here.
Steve McGinn.
Here.
Tim Orick is absent. Leslie Hind is joining us on Zoom. Craig Connell.
Here.
Andrew Logan.
Present.
Kevin Hogan is absent and Rod Richardson.
Present.
Thank you. We do have a quorum.
Thank you so much. To start off, I would just like to say we have a new planning commission chairperson here, or commissioner, I guess is the term, but do you want to introduce yourself to the committee and to the people in the audience?
Sure. My name is Rod Richardson. I have been a resident of Johnson County since 1949. For the last 37 years in the unincorporated part of the county, south of 199th between Lackman and Flum. I am a retired zoning and land use attorney, construction lawyer that's practiced in Kansas, Missouri, for right at 50 years. I have served on the Aubrey Township Zoning Board, the Oxford Aubrey Zoning Board, and the East Consolidated Zoning Board where I am at the present time. And I've had the privilege of serving on a number of other county-related things that I've been appointed to. In this particular matter, I'm the representative of the East Consolidated Zoning Board. So I'm new to this. Despite having served on a lot of other things, I've not served on a planning commission. So it's a pleasure to be here. I have acquainted myself with everything that's been before the board to date. I've read the minutes of the preceding meetings and all of the material that's been previously presented. So I'm, I am up to date and happy to participate.
Awesome. Welcome, and we're excited to have you. And this is a meeting that was continued from a previous meeting. So I appreciate that you read the the meeting minutes to familiarize yourself because we got a lot of great public comments that really kind of added additional perspectives to the issue as well as heard really good commentary and responses to questions that staff gave us that helped kind of illuminate and added clarity to the issues before the board. I think with that being stated, I think we'll move on to public comment. Oh yeah, do you want to do the Zoom statement?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. This meeting is now being recorded with planning commission members attending in person. There's also an option for virtual attendance on Zoom webinar. For Zoom participants wishing to speak, please use the raise hand function in the Zoom app at the start of the agenda item on which you desire to comment. Comments will be received from in-person attendees first, followed by Zoom participants. When it is your turn to speak, the moderator will recognize you by the name or the phone number used to join the Zoom webinar, and your microphone will be unmuted. Please state your name and the community where you reside for the record, followed by your comments. All public speakers will be limited to two minutes unless the chair designates a different time period. If you have trouble with Zoom, please call 913-715-9666. Board members, staff, and presenters, please state your name every time you begin talking, and please speak into the microphone so your comments can be transcribed for the record. This is a public meeting. We are presenting live and recording the meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman Gressay here. Quick maybe question because it sounds like that we are having some audio problems. Would everybody turn off their microphones unless they're speaking? Just so it sounds like we might be getting some feedback. As as far as the public comment portion, I just want to kind of remind the audience that we're excited to hear everybody's public comments. Everything that was stated in the last public hearing is part of the record for this public hearing. So don't feel the need that you have to restate your original points. Certainly, you can state anything you want up to the podium, but I just wanted to reiterate that there is not a need to rehash everything unless you feel the need to do so because it's part of our public comment. So can we go through the signup list for who signed up for a public comment today?
Melissa O'Gara.
Oh, sorry. I guess we'll need to first fetch the list and then we will call you up.
Madam Chairman, Sean Pennley, County Planning Staff. Staff does have a new presentation. So we were wanting to do the presentation before opening up to public comment. The general public comment would be for items not on the agenda. So we do have a staff presentation before we open public comment.
Ah, thank you. Thank you for that clarification. So we'll do kind of two sets of public comments. So we'll do public comments related to items that are not on the agenda currently. And then for items, including the Carnet Plan that are on the agenda, we'll hear a revised presentation from staff based on some of the feedback that we heard from the last meeting. And then you as the public would then have the opportunity to come back up to the podium and add public comment after that. So at this point, is there anybody that would like to make a general public comment that would be limited to two minutes on items that are not on the agenda currently? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on. Have there been any disclosures or communications that any of the commissioners have had with any members of the public that you would like to disclose to the group today?
Madam Chair, this is Andrew Logan. I'd like to make a disclosure just to avoid even the appearance of a conflict. I'll be recusing myself from any discussion or action on item G on the Comprehensive Arterial Road Network Plan.
Okay, thank you. Any other members of the commissioners that have had any direct conversations or communications for members of the public or other third parties related to the issues before us today? Okay. I think moving on. Everybody has a copy of the meeting minutes from last month's meeting. Does anybody have any additions or modifications or deletions that they would propose making to those meeting minutes? All right, hearing none. Can I get a motion to approve the meeting minutes?
So moved.
Mr. Stern, I'm moved. So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, so.
After I abstain, I was not at the meeting. So just to be clear, Greg Wolf abstains.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Wolf. The meeting minutes are hereby approved and made part of the record from the September 23rd, 2025 meeting. We are now going to continue the public hearing that we were having last month that did not conclude in last month's meeting. I believe the the planning staff has a revised presentation that you would propose making at this time?
Yes, Madam Chair. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Jay Leipzig, the planning director. First of all, I want to thank those in the audience for coming out this evening bearing with us in the weather. This is an unusual circumstance, a meeting in this room, as you all know. This is kind of a test case tonight. So we'll do our best. I apologize for the echo. We're going to try to get that resolved here shortly, but we, they're doing some additional technology work in the, in the hearing room upstairs. And so relegated to this room for about the next month or so for, for meeting. So we'll do the best, best we can with this, but I realize we might be somewhat limited, but so when you do speak, please speak in the microphone. And then as the chairman just said, when you're not speaking, if you turn your microphone off, that will help with that, that echo as well. Well, as, as the, the chair just stated, this is a continuation of a hearing from September 23rd to 2025 for the further information discussion of amendments to the Johnson County Rural Conference and Plan to update the Conference of Arterial Road Network Plan or Carnet, including a revised MAP 2 Policy Area Map and MAP 3 for Carnet, and to also include additions regarding housing types. As you all are aware, there were, there were a lot of questions at, at the previous meeting. And we, we have, I, I believe a couple of presentations that will address the questions that were, that were raised last month with, with several folks here this evening. I wanted to briefly introduce Karen Miller will be talking shortly. She's our senior planner that will talk, be talking a little bit about Carnet and the development process. And then we also have Kip Strauss. Kip is the Vice President with HNTB Corporation. And he is the consultant that worked on developing the Transportation Connection Plan. There were some questions at our previous meeting about the modeling that was used, why, why the modeling was, was integrated and how that was done. And Kip will be able to answer those questions for us this evening. So that being said, we, we do have two PowerPoints or two presentations for you this evening. Thought we'd begin with, with Kip Strauss, talking about the Transportation Connection Plan and some of that background.
Okay, thank you for having me, commissioners. I can honestly say I've been in your shoes. I'm on the Overland Park Planning Commission. So it's nice to be here. So let me go on to the next slide. Cool, yeah. Good on, yeah. Now. Can I give you a signal?
Yeah.
Okay, next slide.
Hang it on the end, David. That's how I do it.
Okay. Okay. So HNTB was hired and worked closely with Brian Pedig, who was formerly with Johnson County, and the rest of the Johnson County staff on this study that was led by Johnson County and partnered with De Soto and Douglas County and the Kansas Department of Transportation. The study purpose was to update Carnet as a result of the redevelopment of the Sunflower Army Ammunition Plant, which is now Astra Enterprise Park. The purpose was to update the county's transportation plan, Carnet, as well as the local community transportation plans in the area. The focus of the plan was set out as reconnection of AEP to the surrounding area, including the location of a major north-south corridor through the AEP per the Comprehensive Arterial Roadway Network Plan, review of the county's Carnet Kill Creek Route, review of the county's 111th Street Route, and review of the surrounding area and the transportation plans of the adjacent cities. So some quick background on Carnet. As you all know, it was developed originally in 1999 as a plan for the communities and the county to plan for as development occurs. You can see from the graphic here. Nope. Next slide, please. Okay. You can see from the graphic that there's always been a vision for a north-south corridor, highlighted with the red shaded area in the northwest part of the study area. The corridor was envisioned to be a higher functional class with grade-separated interchanges, which are shown with those brown stars. Next slide, please. So whereas the primary project partners were Johnson County, De Soto, and KDOT, the project also was sponsored by Edgerton, Gardner, Alath, and Douglas County. The study developed or included a technical advisory committee, or TAC, that included staff from project sponsors and HNTB. And you can see the list of the technical advisory committee on the slide. Next slide. So the TAC met three times over the course of the study, the first in June of '24 to introduce the TAC, discuss the project purpose, the study area, the study methodology, and answer questions. Then we met again in October of '24 to present the land use scenario, local road planning, and environmental constraints. And then we had a third and final meeting in April of '25 to present the draft recommendations and discuss the upcoming public meeting. And then we had the public meeting in June in De Soto, and we had 90 people attend that public meeting. So the next slide shows the study methodology that was coordinated with Johnson County, Douglas County, and De Soto and KDOT, and then reviewed with the TAC. I'll walk you through this five-step process. So first step one was to review the plans. This step involved reviewing and discussing the transportation and land use plans of the surrounding cities to best understand the current and future state of the study area, including Johnson County. This step set the foundation of the study. This was, this also included Brian Pedig and myself sitting down with each city, as well as Astra Enterprise Park and Johnson County Parks and Recreation to discuss what their future plans would be. We wanted to understand that. So then in step two was where we developed the initial network. The initial network was starting with the 2015 Carnet Plan, as well as what the adjacent cities' transportation plans were. So De Soto, Alath, Gardner, Edgerton, and so on. We incorporated that. So this network had to be coded into a travel demand model, which is a tool that forecasts traffic based on land use and the transportation network. And it was decided to use the same model that is originated with Mid-America Regional Council. It was modified to be used for the K-10 corridor study by KDOT, and then it was used for this study. Step three was to develop potential, develop, development scenario. So this would be a land use scenario to test future traffic. So a potential land use scenario for the unincorporated areas of Johnson and Douglas County was developed in a geographic information system, or GIS, to geospatially analyze data and determine the location of developable land. Developable land was defined as land that is unincorporated, not in, not located in a floodplain, is zoned agriculture, and has a slope of 6% or less, and no identified environmental issues of oil wells, hazmat sites, and so on. So the developable area was divided into residential and non-residential development to to come up with a future land use scenario. This potential development scenario, we called it, is necessary for travel modeling purposes to develop a 2060 traffic forecast. I would characterize the potential development scenario as a low intensity, as low intensity. Future land use from incorporated cities such as Alath, De Soto, came from those planning departments. So we used the adjacent cities' future land use, and then in the unincorporated area, we came up with this low-intensity land use scenario. Step four was to forecast the traffic. So that potential development scenario was used with KDOT's travel demand model to forecast 2060 future traffic. Multiple iterations of the model were run to arrive at recommended Carnet based on those forecasted volumes. And then step five is where we perform the analysis of land use and the initial transportation network. Traffic volumes were analyzed to understand their origin and destinations, travel patterns, and 2060 demand. So if you go to the next slide. So let's take a look at the existing and future land use. On the existing land use map on the left illustrates land use in the study area. The east and north side of the study area are primarily incorporated suburban land uses of industrial, office, commercial, and residential. 62% of the study area is unincorporated. Rural areas, which include agriculture and low-density residential. Future land use is likely to be driven by the Astra Enterprise Park, New Century Airport, and the Logistics Park, BNSF Intermodal. So another factor is the amount of developable land, which I described, and the intensity of that land use. Just to give you an idea, on the next slide, this shows you Astra Enterprise Park, their future land use plan. This is off of their website. We had an opportunity to meet with AEP representatives, as well as De Soto, since this is now in Incorporated De Soto, and talk about their future development. Their best vision of future development is outlined on their website. You can see from the AEP facts that there are a total of more than 9,000 acres, 2,000 of which are being added to the Kill Creek Park, 309 acres set aside for Panasonic Battery Site, and the remainder is identified as mixed use. So that blue area shows planned mixed use, which is made up of residential and light industrial. The small amount of red along 103rd Street there, north of the blue area, represents some commercial. And the gold represents a solar farm. And the green is the park boundary. It's important to remember that this is just the AEP land use. North of AEP, there's already development going on in De Soto related to the Panasonic site. So if you go to the next slide, this slide shows the environmental constraints of that study area. Some of the most important environmental constraints are the floodplains, topography, parks and rec area, oil and gas wells, and hazmat sites. There are significant floodplains in the northeast area of the study area between AEP and Alath, as well as the southwest portion of the study area, west of Edgerton and Gardner. However, the number one driver of the study is that it was assumed that large portions of the study area will not have access to existing or future sewer system after discussions, discussions with Johnson County wastewater as a result of the two floodplain areas I described. If there were, if that were to change in the future, then Carnet would need to be reevaluated. So that's a big assumption. That sewer system is, cannot be developed, you know, I'll reiterate, in the southwest part of the stare area, as well as the area between AEP and Alath currently. Okay, next slide, please. Shows, so this shows existing traffic volumes as well as future. So the existing are shown in the red, I'm sorry, the brown. They demonstrate daily traffic volumes are higher in the incorporated areas than the unincorporated areas, which is not surprising. Generally, daily volumes are less than 1,500 vehicles a day in the unincorporated areas of Johnson and Douglas County. Future 2060 traffic projections were developed based on the land use scenario and travel model I mentioned. And those are shown in the gold color.
Commissioner Gressay, just one quick question.
Yeah.
What are the units of the, so is it like 800 cars per day or per week?
These are daily volumes.
Okay, thank you.
And in 2060 is the future. Okay, traffic growth is greatest, oh, no, not yet. Traffic growth is greatest along north-south roads of the new corridor through AEP, the Edgerton Road, Four Corners Road, Moonlight Road. So those are some of the roads that see the greatest amount of growth from today to the future. And growth along 135th Street and 143rd Street saw significant growth. Okay. So I wanted to spend just a minute reminding you of the different Carnet roadway types. There's five of them. And so just a quick overview, I'm sorry, there's four of them. On the top is type 1 two-lane and type 2 two-lane and type 2 four-lane. And you can see the biggest differences are the amount, number of access points that cross the main corridor. You can see some example roadways, some volume ranges and speeds, but the number of lanes and the number of access points are really the biggest differences. And so there's only, for type 1, there are only two lanes. For type 2, you could do a two-lane or a four-lane with the same number of access points. And then if you go to the next slide, type 3 is really the highest arterial. And that one you can do as a two-lane or four-lane, but you can see the cross streets are spread out farther. There are no type 4s in our study area, but Carnet does have a type 4, which is more like a K7 freeway. Okay. The next slide is, so now we're getting into our recommendations. So these recommendations were based on the methodology I showed you. The map on the right shows the recommended changes. Only the Johnson County unincorporated roads in the recommended changes map that are different than the existing Carnet on the left are highlighted. So that's important to remember. There are some changes in the incorporated, say, De Soto, but those aren't highlighted. Just unincorporated Johnson County roads that changed from 2015 on the left to the recommended changes are highlighted. In summary, most of the recommended changes are on the north side of the study area. Changes included updates to Carnet designations. You know, we might go from a type 1 to a type 2, or type 2 to a type 3. And in some cases, we went from a type 3 to a type 2 and down. So let's advance to the next slide where we're going to zoom in and kind of talk about a few different areas. And so again, the current Carnet is on the left, the recommended changes are on the right. So I'm going to focus in where it says 1. And so as shown in that area, the large swath identified in the legend as a corridor to be determined. And this goes back, all the way back to 1999. There was always an idea that this would be some sort of corridor. It was always envisioned to be a higher functional, a higher functioning corridor because there were interchanges identified with those stars. It was envisioned to be a type 3 four-lane that starts at K-10 at the, it started at the interchange of Cape 10 and Evening Star Road. And transitions either to Evening Star or Edgerton, I think by the swath. This is the route that, but if you look on the right, it, the recommendation is to connect over to Edgerton Road. This is the alignment that is identified in the De Soto Comprehensive Plan today. It was confirmed with Astra Enterprise Park as the best alignment, as well as some high-level engineering that was done to identify that as the best alignment. So, and, and it's important to know that that's all within the AEP and De Soto city limits. This in turn aligns with Edgerton Road, which was also identified in the existing Carnet with the red shaded polygon. Okay. So now we'll go on to this focus area 2. I think there's just four. So as shown with the 2 and the arrows, improvements along 143rd Street helps split north-south traffic along Edgerton Road and Four Corners Road for traffic that wants to travel between K-10 and I-35 at Homestead Road. So the technical advisory committee also saw 143rd Street as an important east-west corridor connecting Douglas County and Alath. So to dive into this a little bit more, the traffic flow from the travel demand model is really that heavy southbound traffic volumes on the new connector road. It's as high as 33,000 vehicles a day in the AEP area near 143rd. So when we run the model, we see that there's a desire of motorists as they continue south to split between Edgerton Road and Four Corners at 143rd. And Four Corners becomes an attractive north-south corridor because there's a direct connection to 199th Street and then to the I-35 and Homestead interchange. So for people that are wanting to get to I-35, Four Corners is the most direct route to get there. You can get there with Edgerton Road also, but it's not as direct. Wanted to give you an idea of volumes between 143rd and 151st. East-west future 2060 traffic volumes between Edgerton Road and Four Corners. On 143rd, they range from 9,600 to 13,900. And on 151st, they range from 3,400 to 4,600. So you know, they're about a third less on 151st than 143rd. Dilly was also downgraded for the one-mile section. I think if you go back one, I just wanted to mention there were some questions about Dilly, and it was downgraded for the one-mile segment between 143rd and 151st. And Four Corners was upgraded for that same mile segment because Four Corners has that most direct connection to I-35 and Homestead interchange. I-35 and Homestead interchange, whereas Dilly didn't. Okay, now the third focus area. The east side of AEP establishes multiple corridor connections to Kill Creek Park, AEP, and the west side of AEP with improvements to 111th Street or College Boulevard, 127th and 135th. In addition, the modeling confirmed the need for carnip type-two route along 111th Street as a two-lane road rather than a four-lane road. So that was a downgrade. As shown on the map, 111th Street has the potential in the future to connect K7 Highway over to Douglas County. So that's an important east-west connector. And then finally, the next slide, the fourth focus area. We were asked to take another look at Kill Creek Corridor. It was originally shown as off of the section line. And the existing Kill Creek Route extending from K10 all the way down to 151st. The existing carnip has Kill Creek Road off-alignment as a type-three four-lane. This recommended Kill Creek alignment was removed in the rec, in our recommendations because Kill Creek had lower traffic volumes on Kill Creek Road than previously thought. Higher traffic volumes on Waverly east of Kill Creek. And the alignment being off-alignment, not on the mile section line, this would increase the cost of the project. So in other words, we're not expecting a lot of development over on this east side because of the flood plains I talked about when we met with Alatha. They said they're updating their comprehensive plan to not show any growth to the west because of, I think because of costs because of that floodplain. So that's the conclusion of my comments, and I'm open for any questions.
Commissioner Grisay, I was just curious, should we do public comment at this point? And then, or do we have one more presentation?
Sean Penley, Planning Staff. Yes, so we do have another presentation. Karen Miller will go through the carnip updates, and so we'll show the latest again of the proposed carnip map and give the other comprehensive plan updates. But maybe we go through that presentation, then we open up to questions of these presentations, and then we go to the public comments is what we would recommend.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Karen Miller with the Planning Department. And so my piece will be kind of addressing how we, we use carnip in the development process, how planners use carnip when we, we get a development proposal. So if you could do the next slide. So carnip is an important tool used by the county to review and guide development. And so the impetus of this is to see how carnip fits into the overall, overall development process in unincorporated Johnson County. Next. Here is the, the proposed carnip map. So we took the recommendations of the, the transportation plan and we, we translated it directly into this, this map. This would be a document located in the comprehensive plan. And that location's important. We have the comprehensive plan, which guides our development as opposed to regulations which require particular standards to be met. And I'll, at this point, just direct you to, point with the laser, to this red circle at 119th Street. So there is a, a very small black dashed line, and that is a type-one future carnip route. And we were contacted by JCPRD, which is Johnson County Parks and Rec Department. And they asked that we remove that little piece of future type-one carnip. There's no road there now. And there, in the, in the previous carnip map or the, the current one, there doesn't show a route there. And the reason why they would like for it to be removed is for some potential land acquisition in that area. So it would be more harmonious with their plans if we remove just that little piece of, of future type-one right away. And I have it, at the end of this presentation, I'll show a recommended motion, and that motion would include removing that piece of carnip route. If you could go on, thank you. And so also, we're amending the, the policy area map. The policy area map is also in the comp plan, and that location is important. These are guides. Carnip would be a guide in the policy area map. And we take our, our various policy areas, which are the rural and the rural traditional, and those view those parts of the county that are in this policy area as being more rural, more open, larger lots. When we say large lots in the county, we think of 10-plus acres with more agricultural uses. And then, and those are the, the yellow and the blue, rural and rural traditional policy areas. It also shows urban policy area. Those are usually adjacent to the cities. And we think of those, if they're house lots, they're usually smaller. They're less than 10 acres. And there's also the potential for a little bit more urban-type development, not very intense, but a little bit more urban. And so we're not proposing to change any of the policy areas. We're only proposing to swap out the current carnip routes with the, the new proposed carnip routes. Next, please. So in terms of the planners dealing with the development proposal. And so, and I'm thinking in terms of carnip, with carnip, that usually involves dividing property to create new lots for single-family homes. That's usually when we lean on carnip, when we, we have a development proposal. So the first thing, if you look at that first column, we look at the comprehensive plan. And that comp plan provides the vision for development. Is it in a rural, a rural policy area or an urban fringe policy area? And this guides our decisions for our development proposal. So we check the policy area map, and we see if the proposal is appropriate for that particular area. So for a single-family home development, we would look to see, are the lots too small? But should that really go to an urban fringe area, or are they appropriately large, like a 10-acre lot? We also check the carnip route, and that's going to factor in with the zoning regulations. So, so when we get a development proposal for dividing property, we check the policy area that tells what's appropriate use and density, and we check the carnip route, which we're going to use with the regulations. So the next thing, if you look at the, the second column to the right, those are the zoning regulations. So the zoning regulations implements the comprehensive plan. So in specifically, it also implements carnip, because that's part of the comprehensive plan. Zoning regulations are requirements. A zoning district has a minimum lot area for new lots, and it also has some other things. So if you could go to the next slide. So the zoning regulations implement carnip by regulating three things, and those three things are on that left column. Minimum frontage per new driveways onto a carnip road. You're only allowed to, to directly front onto a carnip road with a new route in the rural zoning district. It also regulate, implements carnip by prohibiting access of lots directly onto an arterial road if you have residential zoning. Residential zoning are those lots that are less than 10 acres and generally is more appropriate closer to the cities. And it also regulates minimum distance between the new streets intersecting carnip. And so if you think back to that visual that Kip showed you, and it showed how the, the, the streets were laid out in a type-one and a type-two and a type-three with those distances, that's what this is talking about. So the, the next thing, and the only really regulation I'm going to delve into is the minimum frontage per new driveway. So we have a development proposal, we're wanting to divide property into new lots. And it's, it's in probably the, a rural policy area, because the majority of this study area is in a rural policy area. We look at the carnip type. And so if it's a type-three, we know that in the future, there's going to be a lot of traffic on this road. And so what we say with a type-three, the regulation is that there has to be within this new development at least 1,320 feet per driveway onto a type-three carnip road. And then if it's a type-two, we tell the developer, well, each of your, your new driveways needs to have at least 660 feet of frontage onto the type-two carnip road. And then the type-one, you can, you can dip down to 330 feet of frontage per driveway. And so notice, it's kind of maybe an inverse relationship. The, the route with the most traffic has, I guess it's direct relationship, most traffic has the largest frontage per driveway. And in the red, and this is really, really important. The roads with the most traffic in the future will have the greatest distance between driveways to reduce turning conflicts and to maintain the capacity of the road. Because when you have a driveway and somebody's turning in and out, you have to slow down, and you can't, you can't carry as much traffic. And then at the bottom, the roads with the least traffic in the future have the least need to control future turning conflicts. So, next slide, please. So this is my last example. So this is trying to make it even a little bit more concrete. So let's just do an example of how minimum frontage per driveway works. So let's say we have a typical parcel, a 40-acre parcel. And some people would think of that as a quarter-quarter, a quarter of a quarter section. And then, and this is a very typical thing that we see, a 40 acres. Somebody wants to divide this. They come to us. So we look and we see, is it a type-one carnip? Well, that, that 40-acre parcel, 330 feet per driveway, you can, that leaves 10 acres per lot with four lots. And if you look at the diagram on the bottom, you can see within that quarter-mile, that 13, 20 feet, you have the four driveways. And the same thing with, we do the same thing with the two, type-two carnip and the type-three carnip. And if you look at the corresponding diagrams, a type-two carnip in the same amount of distance only has two driveways. And the type-one, you could only have one driveway for that 40 acres. You know, this is, this is kind of one of the most basic kind of development proposal we get. Now, we have some variations and, and some things. But I think this does a good job of showing you when you have a type-three carnip, we're regulating the number of driveways, and this is kind of a very elegant way to preserve that capacity on a type-three road by reducing these driveways. And kind of that's the, the end of kind of that example. And just to note that October 28th today, this is our continued public hearing. And so the hope is that we'll close the public hearing and provide recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners today. If that's the case, then the Planning Commission's recommendation would go to the Board of County Commissioners December 11th. That's the tentative date for the Board of County Commissioners to start consideration of that. Next slide. And like I mentioned earlier, here's a proposed motion. And the red is kind of the new idea of removing the future type-one designation along 119th Street, west of Astra Enterprise Park on the, on the carnip map. And then also, just a reminder, we're kind of talking about new ideas today at our previous public hearing. We, we completely went over all, all of the recommendations and, and proposed amendments, which also included additions regarding housing options submitted by staff. And now we can go to questions.
Commissioner Grisay, I think at this point, it might be helpful to hear the public comments, and that might help color or inform some of the questions the commissioners ask to the planning staff. And, and what was your name again? I apologize. Kip Strauss, and to Mr. Strauss as well. So I think maybe we'll skip to the public comment portion. And I think the first person that we have up, if we have the timer for the two-minute timer, perfect, would be Krista Wilson.
My name's Krista Wilson. I live at 16240 Edgerton Road. I wish I would have had access to the presentation that was made, because that was a lot of information, and I've learned a lot since we've started this whole carnip process. And as I listen to it, and I listen to your zoning recommendations, and I just honestly do not see how harmoniously you can fit that carnip corridor through Edgerton Road with any of your zoning regulations that we have right now. We did a little calculating, my front door is 92 feet from the center of Edgerton Road right now. And to put it in football terms, Xavier Worthy could run from the middle of the road to my door in 3.15 seconds. So just if that gives you an idea. And so we have a 300-foot frontage, and we are not alone in our short frontages, and we've been told we've been grandfathered in, which honestly doesn't matter to me. But I found this little gem in your documents. Part one, chapter two, section 5.1 of the Comprehensive Plan says you will find these words, "Under a balanced and orderly growth strategy, the issue is not having to choose between either accepting growth versus protecting the environment and rural character. Instead, the issue of how to balance and allow development so that the quality of life of the unincorporated area remains high and an economic asset, while at the same time supporting the environment and preserving as much of the existing open space and rural character as is reasonable." And I listened to the plan, and it is purely about developing unincorporated areas. You, you said it yourselves, as I was listening to you talk. This is our development plan, our development plan, our development plan. And our area has had no representation, no seat at any of these tables as you've developed your development plan. And that's really frustrating as a taxpayer, as a citizen, as a person who lives 90 feet from a road that you're considering, or that you have said since 99 will be a four-lane divided 55 mile-per-hour road. Not a highway, a road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Next, I think we have, is it Becky Almeida?
Hi, my name's Becky Almeida. I live at 17070 Edgerton Road. I'd like to thank the Planning Commission for postponing their vote for carnip in September, so that you could ask more questions and get more clarity. I understand carnip is not a construction plan and is based on future potential traffic. But how can you have a plan without a plan of how you will handle the 62 homes that reside along Edgerton Road between 143rd and 56th Highway? Or a plan of how you will handle the many homes that are within the right-of-way required for a type-three four-lane road? One of these homes has been built within the last two years and is less than 150 feet from center of road. These homes, businesses, farms, buildings, and most importantly, people will be greatly impacted if Edgerton Road becomes a four-lane 55 mile-per-hour highway. I would also like to point out that at 56th Highway, Edgerton Road becomes 8th Street in the city of Edgerton, and continues to be 8th Street until just a little south of 207th Street. If your traffic study was based on Edgerton Road being a straight shot from 143rd to I-35, which I would assume is why you would want it to be a four-lane 55 mile-per-hour highway to handle potential truck, truck traffic to and from AEP, your study and map are flawed. The carnip map needs to remove the section of 8th Street in Edgerton as a four-lane 55 mile-per-hour highway, just as the portion of 199th Street that was annexed into Gardner was recently removed. My ask is that you will consider downgrading Edgerton Road from a type-three four lane to something more conducive and safe for the residents of Edgerton Road. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Alamida. Sorry if I said that incorrectly. I think next we have, is it Robin Hyde? Or, or, oh, maybe Calvin Hyde? I apologize. Yes, Calvin Hayden. Sorry, one more time.
Thank you, manager. Rods, good to see you here. Glad to see you on this commission. I've sat on this commission before and said 18 years on zoning board. This is, this is a terrible plan for Edgerton Road. There's 62 houses between 56th Highway and 143rd Street. There's over 90 accesses to fields and farms on there and driveways. I've got two my own. We can't afford to do this. It doesn't even, it doesn't, the cost to acquire the right of way would be astronomical. Right now there are lots selling within one half mile of me for $400,000 for 10 acres. The cost is going to be astronomical. There are about 22 houses, residences that are within 100 feet of Edgerton Road. They'll have to be purchased. It's ridiculous. If you go to Sunflower Road, which has access to I-35, and I don't know who did the traffic study. It's on a ridge. It goes all the way to the Kansas River with a highway access. The road at K-10 that comes out of Sunflower Ordinance Plant is a two lane road. K-10 and Sunflower was designed for ramps to get on K-10. There are literally, the bridges are there. The only bridge that needs to be built would be the one over Bull Creek to get down to the Sunflower exit on the I-35. One bridge. It's all on a ridge. I don't understand why we're looking at Edgerton when all of these residents are concerned about this. Now, and also there's property out there for sale. It's not selling now because people don't want to have a four lane road in front of their 10 acre farm. So it defies common sense. Guys, you're on this board to represent us. You're all we've got. We don't even have a commissioner that lives out in rural areas now. We need your help. We need you to help support us. Please, please stop this madness on Edgerton Road. They can move it over. They can still connect to any roads they want to in the Astra Park. Or if they want to go north to I-70, it's an option to do that, which makes a lot more sense to me to connect I-70 and I-35 for truck traffic. On Sunflower Road, there are only five houses between Edgerton 56th Highway and 143rd, 151st Street. I mean, it is a straight shot on a ridge and even built power lines up it. So that's where they should go.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you guys and appreciate your help.
Thank you again. And sorry, I completely misread your name. Next we have, is it Doug Heiner or Minor? One, one of the two.
Yeah, the first one. My name is Doug Heiner. Live at 14940 Edgerton Road, just north 151st. New resident, moved into the property just a year ago. And my property taxes that I want to pay in December are going to be 56% higher than they were a year ago. So back to Calvin's point as far as property taxes and all of that. I forget the guy's name from Overland Park over here where they did all the engineering studies and all of that. My guess is they did not take into consideration the amount of residential property you're going to take off of the docket with the acquisition of the, the, the expanded road. Back to Calvin's point, you know, there are agricultural roads, you know, more rural roads out in the area that could be used where you don't take the property taxes out of the county. You know, I would also have a question for the board members in here. I'd like to see a show of hands who have actually driven down Edgerton Road. So the rest of you have no idea the impact you're going to have on just this small amount of people that are here. At one point I saw where the carnet plan, I think it was in effect for like 5,000 homes. There's no way there's 5,000 households that know that this is about to happen. This, this room would be full of people. So this is all, to me, it's all slight, underhand and it's been done very, very quietly. It's, it's, it's very offensive to me. And the lady here from the planning commission said she moved to approve. I moved to reject this plan and I'm sure other people in this room agree. So thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Heiner. I, I don't know if I can read this. Last name, is it, the last name is Hornball, maybe? Hornball?
Tell the first name.
Is it Bridgette or? Maybe I'll ask the question. Is there anybody? Yeah. Is there anybody else that would like to make a public comment here today? Come to the podium, please.
My name is Paul Hamilton. I live at 14619 Edgerton Road. As I look at this, I, I come to the conclusion that somebody decided that we need to develop where we live. I don't know who made that decision or why they made that decision. But that's not what I want. That's not what I want out of my commission is, is to fully develop every place in the county. I moved out here 25 years ago, not so I could wait for the development to come. Exactly the opposite. And it looks to me like whoever is making the decision, whether it's the people sitting over there and planning or whatever, why? We have low unemployment. You can't find enough people to get jobs from what they say. So why are we pushing development? It doesn't make any sense to me just from a simple logical standpoint. I don't want cars driving up and down my driveway. You know, I'm, I'm a little ways away from the road, but the road is not going to be very far from my property. If you go with this, with this plan, you know, and I guess cost ought to be looked at and it would appear to me that's just kind of a unique idea. And some of these ideas have been thrown out at the meeting you had over in DeSoto a few weeks ago, or I guess it was DeSoto. And I, I haven't seen any one of the things I heard people talking about didn't come up in any conversation here of their plans. So I think they didn't, they listened, but nobody was taking notes. I know that for a fact. And so I just think the whole thing has been thought out. Move, move to the center of the mile where the houses are. Build a new road. Be a hell of a lot cheaper than buying a bunch of million dollar houses. If you stop and think about it a little bit, there's no houses in the middle of the road in the, between, between two roads. So that's what I think needs to be considered. Some more thought put into it and some alternatives maybe come up with. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hamilton. Yes, come on.
I'm Gene Sinisak. I'm an Alate resident and I'm also a candidate for Board of County Commissioner Chair for next year. I want to commend the committee. First of all, I attended last week's meetings. I've been going to a lot of different county meetings. And what you did last month in showing interaction to the public comments that were offered, I think was stellar. Very seldom do you see that where you earnestly take hold of what's said by the affected residents and then put forth an action plan to defer what it was that you were citing at the time and, or to have tonight's meeting. But based upon tonight's meeting, there's been, in my mind, you know, I, I haven't been out to drive Edgerton Road either. I've, I've listened attentively to these meetings though. But what the gentleman presented, Mr. Hayden here, regarding the number of access points that are along that road. And he's also provided an alternative road that he views would be less obstructive and also, you know, let's face it, what we're all about is safety here as well. So when you've got that, and I come from a farm background, farm family. I understand what's going on at harvest time. You're not going to eliminate, you know, the agricultural aspect of what's there currently. And farm traffic is going to move at a very slow speed. It's going to be very deliberate. And you're not going to have people that are necessarily mindful of those things happening out there. So what I would ask, just in terms of casual observation here, is to defer your decision even a little bit further to provide feedback on the comments that were raised about the alternative for Sunflower Road. I don't know much about it now, but from what was presented earlier, it seemed pretty compelling that it deserves some type of attention. Likewise, the comments that were made regarding the lack of, the lack of revenue stream coming by eliminating some of what you're going to have to acquire in terms of properties. And then from what I also hear in terms of just the overall cost of it merits even further discussion as well. So thank you for accepting my comments. I think that there's been some very legitimate concerns presented by the residents and it merits looking into. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Mr. Simsek. Simsek, thank you. Do any of the commissioners have questions? I have a kind of a long list of questions I'd like to ask the planning staff, but I didn't want to commodeer the discussion.
This is Craig Connell. Some questions for Kip, I think. So I noticed the study area takes into account all the way to 2200 Road in Douglas County. And I, I was just very curious why there was no consideration or if, if there was, why it isn't in the report? For 2300 Road, which has less than half the houses on it that Edgerton Road does, or 2200 Road, which is already paved and you just need to add two more lanes to it in Douglas County.
So I think it's important to understand that this was not an alignment study. We did not do engineering to see, we didn't count houses. We didn't look at the costs of the roadway. It was looking at where were the travel patterns based on a land use. So that's, that's something that's important to understand. An alignment, an engineering alignment study could look at some of the questions that are being raised. Is there another alignment? This is building on the previous, the current carnet. It's taking into consideration DeSoto and AEP's plans of where they're putting their roadway and it's looking at where 2060 traffic would grow. So those are some of the underlying things. But I think some of the points the public made and you're making is, you know, could be studied in a more detailed engineering alignment study, which this was not. Something else I wanted to just mention that I think is important is there's no, there's no plans to build Edgerton Road to a four lane. That carnet is just a plan for as development occurs and areas become incorporated, then the cities know what to build. So when will Edgerton Road become incorporated in some city? Could be a long time, but this is, and so roads are only built when traffic warrants them. So, you know, if there, if traffic stays low in this area, then there's no need to make any changes. So I think that's important to understand. It's not like the county's planning to go out and build a four lane.
Sure. I, I understand that, but I guess a follow-up. As, as Karen mentioned, the plan dictates what development can occur on the road. And so if we are now going to restrict the number of driveways on Edgerton Road here, hence going forward, even though nothing may be built for 30 years, is that the right decision to make now? So I'm just, I'm just questioning, is this the right plan for now? And is it the right plan for 30 years down the road? And I don't think we even considered those two eastern roads in Douglas County, which are very, very open for a north, south corridor.
Yeah, we just.
From 56th Highway to K-10.
We just didn't see very much traffic, very low traffic volumes on those roads.
Right. But if you build the road, that's where it'll come from. Right?
And if you, you know, coordinated with DeSoto and maybe changed, you know, their alignment. I mean, I think a lot of what's happening on Edgerton Road is, is coming off of that new route that's going from Evening Star and K-10 and it's aligned over to Edgerton. You know, in DeSoto's comprehensive plan.
Okay. Would this road be funded by Johnson County? Or is this a KDOT road? Or who's going to fund this road? Edgerton is, is for.
Sean Pendley, planning staff. There is no plan for any road improvements to any roads. So there is no plan for cost sharing agreements, plans, engineering alignments. As Kip mentioned, the traffic models are what carnet is based on and what any, any change would be based on. Carnet is simply about existing arterial roads. There is no agreements or any plan with any of the jurisdictions to improve any of these arterial roads. As development occurs and any improvements would be warranted, that's when the roads would be improved. So we're just anticipating based on the modeling where the traffic is today and where it's expected to continue based on those arterial roads. That's what we're really predigating this entire carnet plan on. And again, it's already adopted. This has been adopted, you know, in its current form since 2015 and since originally 1999. So really just growing on that. These are section line roads as they are in virtually any arterial road in the unincorporated area where there is a road, it's an arterial road. The only question is the volumes at this time.
Commissioner, Commissioner Grace, I guess one of the questions I'd ask is, how far into the future, I know that Kip, you mentioned that the anticipated traffic patterns were 2060. How accurate are the models looking out to 2060?
Well, I mean, I've been, I've been dealing with that question for 30 plus years. And so they're the most accurate industry tool. KDOT, this is the same methodology that KDOT uses that Mid-America Regional Council uses to plan for the region. They have a travel demand model. And so it's only as good as the information you put into it. And so this is, this was one potential land use scenario. You know, others could be developed, but it was a pretty low intensity, like I said, for the unincorporated areas. But then also the transportation network is dictating what's going where. And I, I'll go back to that alignment through DeSoto is causing a a pretty decent amount of traffic on Edgerton. And it's really the only north, south route connecting K-10 with I-35. There's really, so there's one north, south route and it, it's on Edgerton right now. So there's no other really north, south corridor in this study area.
Kind of as a follow-up, Mr. Pendley, how often again are the carnet plans revisited and updated based on new information?
The timing of updates to carnet varies. Like I said, the last, current version was adopted in 2015. So it's been 10 years. I think we evaluate those as needed based on changes, but it's averaging probably right about 10 years. There's only been about three total updates since it was originally adopted in 1999. And it's really, we, we revisit the comprehensive plan annually for any specific updates. Usually there's a text change, like some of those are included in this, this round of updates. But for carnet, it's really just as needed here again, because of recent changes with the Astra Enterprise Park and redevelopment of the Sunflower property. That is what was driving this now and reconnecting the, the arterial roads through that area. But it's really, it just says needed and it's about five to 10 years realistically.
And as a follow-up, really quick, Kip, to that question. Is the potential carnet recommendations that your study evaluated based on a 10 year look ahead of anticipated traffic? Or a 2060 look ahead for traffic?
Yeah, their, their recommendations are kind of an, an ultimate build 2060. Yeah. So they're, we're putting in build out land use in this area. Taking into consideration, you know, all the existing large lots, we're not changing those. And so based on, it's a 2060 ultimate master plan, I'd think of it as.
And in your experience, is it common for a carnet designation to jump drastically for a large section of road? I think the thing I'm particularly having trouble with and, you know, as a recovering engineer myself, I, I struggle with the idea of jumping from a type one road all the way to a type three road when the data hasn't materialized in a way to justify that type of devaluation of these people's property, which will in essence happen when you designate from type one to type three. I guess I'm curious what the rationale would happen from going from a type one to a type two and then waiting to see if the data materialized to justify a revisit of the carnet plan. Given that we are predicting. Given that we are predicting so far out in the future with developments that really haven't been fully materialized and the traffic hasn't fully materialized to justify such a drastic change.
Well, and I'm not sure exactly where you're talking about the change, but I consider this to see very little change from 2015 to now. Edgerton Road was a type three in 1999 and in 2015, and it's still a type three. The only area that's changed is, I think of where we're focused on the west side is that red hashed area that was like undecided, and now we have a more specific alignment. And that the two miles, if you're talking about that of Edgerton Road, that was, it was within that red area. So it was really not known rather than a change from type one to type three.
One, one follow-up question I have. Maybe I'm just kind of being fully transparent here. I find it interesting that Johnson County Parks and Rec can make a preferential request to the planning staff that's adhered to. But yet the people of the county would make a preferential request that's not adhered to. And I was kind of curious when planning staff is making a recommendation for us to make a modification to the study that Kip has recommended, why those modifications are given more weight than maybe some of the other modifications that are being requested by other members in the public?
Madam Chair, Sean Pendley County Planning Staff, I could try to address that. And as Karen had mentioned in the presentation about that requested change from JCPRD, that's a section that currently is neither built, it's not existing, and also was not on the previous carnet map. We had recommended the connection now because we were recommending arterial roadway connections through every one of the section line roads that are existing on either east or west side of Astra Enterprise Park. So we had connections recommended for 111th, 119th, 127th, and 135th Street. They, the one change that was never contemplated previously with carnet was that west side of Astra Enterprise Park at 119th Street. So as Karen mentioned, that one little area that she was showing. The reason why JCPRD had concerns about that was they'd never had aware, were aware of a potential connection there. And they're currently going through a process of a land transfer from the federal government to JCPRD as parkland in that area. That was the specific concern. We certainly just are making that recommendation because of the potential conflict with that. And again, the difference here is that was not a part of the current adopted carnet plan. As an example, then conversely for a Edgerton Road, that is an existing arterial road. And in the section that was changed from the type one to type three, as Mr. Schloss has indicated, that is an area that was a part of that area to be determined. So it was always studied again, it was anticipated needing to be updated and studied. And that's what we're doing now. So that's the difference with the, between that recommendation and that change.
No, I appreciate, I appreciate that distinction. I was trying to understand why that, why that request was kind of adopted as part of the recommendations. I appreciate that. I guess my, my last question would be, and I think maybe it was already answered from a previous question, but I just want to make sure I was tracking properly. It, it sounds like Kip, a limitation of the study that you performed was that you, you were simply tracking where existing traffic patterns were going through and not any cost or potential redevelopment of maybe Sunflower Road or other roads to see if that would attract more traffic to those areas and what may be structural or financial limitations of alternative road patterns compared with the cost potentially of those 2060 projects to acquire the rights to make a four lane road? Am I understanding the limitations of your study correctly?
Yeah, that's correct.
Okay. Did anybody else have questions?
Yes, Commissioner McGank. I spent about three hours out there Sunday just trying to understand all this and and the why of the carnet plan and the conclusion I, I've kind of come to is that, and my fear of voting in a favor of this is that this all of a sudden becomes what's going to happen. And I, and I think that's probably true. That is what's going to happen if we all vote yes for this. But I don't think, I think we should be looking at other ways to get there than Edgerton. I mean, that is a beautiful area out there. And that road has been fairly, probably the most developed of all. If you drive up and down Sunflower and you drive up and down Edgerton, and then you drive over to Evening Star, and then in Douglas County Road, all of them make more sense by what you see driving down the road. I understand Evening Star may have a flood plain issue with that side. Some of Sunflower has some of those issues with gas wells and things like that, and also some floodplains. So I know all that comes into it. But in the, at the end, it's going to come down to dollars and cents. What makes more sense, buying all these homes that you're going to have to buy on Edgerton Road or developing, raising the land, doing things that, so I don't know, it's hard to tell right now. But I have a problem with voting for it when I think that if I do vote yes, that's just going to be what's going to happen. And without looking at other alternatives, Douglas County line, which I understand that has issues, can now you're dealing with Douglas County and Johnson County trying to get together on that. And I feel for everybody on it. I live right on Black Bob Road. We're going through exactly, you know, 25 years ago, I had an idea that it was going to widen, but I didn't know how much and it, it's not fun. So we want to make the right decision here and I, I struggle with the idea of saying yes to this.
Commissioner Stare, I'm trying to follow this and I, I it seems to me that there are competing, obviously competing interests. And I, I mean, this study didn't take that into consideration, if I understand you correctly, that any, looking at any other alternatives or the impact of this, if it were to happen in 2060 or whatever. Is that usual to not? I mean, the other thing I think I remember from last month was that De Soto is coming down to this area on Edgerton with a four lane road. Is that, is that what their plan is as we understand it? You're nodding your head that.
Yes, yes. You can see the alignment on that policy map.
And, and we
Or, or the other, the carnet map shows the dashed purple is the alignment that they have in their comprehensive plan.
Okay, and we are talking about a, a piece of Edgerton Road that's from 56 Highway to 143rd Street. Is that, is that correct?
Yeah.
No? Help me then.
This is Karen Miller. We're only talking about changing 100 Edgerton Road from 159th to 143rd.
Good. Is, it seems to me I, I may have heard this wrong, but some of Edgerton Road South is also four lane in my, or at least has been for a long time. Scheduled to be three, a type three road? And has all of this been scheduled to be type three road since 1996?
So starting it on Edgerton Road at 159th going south to County Line, that's been a type three since its adoption in 1999. So what we're today talking about is continuing that type three designation into the, if you look at the, the rec, the carnet map currently, see that the pink area is shown as a type three four line, four lane. We're extending the, the type three route from 159th Street north to the Astra Boundary. And at that point, it would connect to the the, the city comp plan route.
De Soto, the De Soto.
De Soto. So really, if we have treated it that, well, let me restate that. Anything in that pink corridor is labeled as a potential type three four lane. And that is, this route is in that pink corridor. So it's labeled as a potential type three four lane in our current carnet map.
A quick question, Commissioner Garcia. Where does the city of Gardner border happen on Edgerton in this map?
Sean Pendley County Planning Staff, I'll see if I can go back. It'd be easier to see the current policy area map, maybe that would show the current. Nah, that doesn't show it very well, does it? Carnet map, it'd be hard to see, but very light shaded gray area. Gardner's city limits are in this area designated light gray. I believe their boundary generally is at, what's that? That far west boundary, Four Corners Road generally. And that's their kind of western boundary currently. And then, you know, if you get further down south, combining with Edgerton. But generally speaking, right now, the western boundary for Gardner city limits is Four Corners Road.
Commissioner Garcia, maybe I was misunderstanding. I, I thought I, I thought that you mentioned that Edgerton Road was in Gardner and was already designated as a type three carnet road by the city of Gardner? So where is that designation start? Or maybe I misunderstood.
I think what we were referring to is the north part is in De Soto. The, the alignment, but none of that is existing today. You know, that, that's the former Sunflower Army ammunition plant. That's where it's aligning with Edgerton Road at 143rd Street. That's the city of De Soto, north of 143rd. It's their plan for their future Parkway will align with Edgerton Road.
Is Commissioner Garcia, is unincorporated Johnson County start at 143rd? It goes down?
Going south.
So I mean, could we not have a diagonal road that went across and connected with Sunflower there?
Through the city of De Soto?
Well, that's what I
That's the city.
I was trying to understand 143rd connecting to 151st at Sunflower. If, so for example, I'm just trying to understand is that this map contemplates future roads that don't exist? And I'm trying to understand as a commissioner, what options are where would we look at a potential alternate route on Sunflower Road that avoids a ton of impacts to houses that would only require a small additional road that's a diagonal? And we could still connect with the De Soto type three road and then go south? I'm just, I'm just trying to understand it, why that possibility wasn't considered?
We could, Sean Pendley Planning Staff, again, we could ask Public Works if they're aware of any potential alternate study. I'm not aware of any other study. We haven't looked at that. Again, that would be a whole separate alignment study. We've never contemplated that or discussed that. Again, we're basing it off of the current carnet map. And I don't remember if through the process of the transportation connection plan, if that was contemplated. And I don't know how Gardner would respond to that either. You know, as Mr. Schloss has indicated, you know, the part of the technical advisory committee for this transportation connection plan did take into account all of the other jurisdictions and taking their recommendations for their future traffic planning. They, there were no objections to this, these proposals and these recommendations from the transportation connection plan. I do not know about a alignment of a new future arterial lining up with Four Corners Road or any other road. I'm not.
Madam Chair.
Oh, go ahead.
Just so I can make it a point of clarity, I would, since the, the public, those, those comments have concluded for the public, I would recommend that we close the public hearing at this time. Since we're having discussion with the planning commission staff and, and just the procedural items.
Oh, I apologize. Since there are no other future public comments, thank you, Mr. Leipzig. Public comment is over and now questions, apologies. And maybe, Mr. Pendley, I, maybe I was misunderstanding. I, one of the considerations that I was weighing was alignment with the neighboring cities. And what I understood was De Soto had passed that the connecting road in De Soto would be a type three road. What I thought I had understood was Gardner had also had Edgerton Road as a type three road. And so the question was, what should be in between? Do I understand that I was inaccurate, that it's only a type three road for this potential new part of De Soto, but Gardner has not yet determined whether it's a type three road on Edgerton?
I, I don't know if Gardner has made a recommendation for what, I don't know what garden, the city of Gardner, I don't know what their recommendation is for Gardner or Edgerton Road, or if they have a recommendation for
Okay.
I'm not, I'm not sure about their position on that arterial.
This is Commissioner Wolf. We got a couple of questions. So I'm not an engineer, so I need to get some clarification. So I just want to make sure I understand first, if we say yes to this, nothing happens until this area gets annexed into a city. Is that correct?
Sean Pendley Planning Staff, I wouldn't say, yeah, the, the reality is there's no plans for improvements of any arterial road.
Let me ask the question better. If we say yes to this, that no road construction occurs until a city annexes this land. Is that correct?
Yeah, you, I wouldn't say there, there were no road construction. There's always a potential for safety improvements. There are no plans by county, Johnson County, to improve any arterial roads in the unincorporated area, except or if it would be needed for safety improvements, I'll, I'll let Public Works answer if there's any more detail. There are no plans for any proposed improvements to any roads in the unincorporated area. The reality is what would likely happen, what we see most often with roads in the unincorporated area, there's usually only safety improvements, shoulder improvements, widening. If we get into a place when the city annexes the road, yes, or, or annexes the land adjacent to an arterial road, the city generally accepts the maintenance responsibility for the road and any future improvements. That is usually what happens. When these roads are improved, it generally is when the properties adjacent to those roads are annexed in the city. That's, that's true. But let Public Works answer any other details to that.
Okay, I'd love to hear that from Public Works. Yes.
Oh.
Scott Kyrgis, Public Works. Could you just restate the question?
So my, my question is, if we say yes to this, does the, the, the construction on the roads happen only after a city annexes the land that covers this Edgerton Road area?
Yeah, I don't think it gets that detailed as far as carnet is concerned. And we don't, you know, necessarily how annexation would unfold. So I don't know.
I, I guess my question is, people worried about this, this road getting expanded to four lanes. Does that not happen? That, that's not going to happen until a city annexes it and then decides to expand it to four lanes. Is that a true statement?
Yeah, I would say that's not likely. Yeah. Yep.
I'm sorry, that, I didn't understand your answer.
Already, sorry. Yeah, yes, that's likely how it would unfold.
Okay, so there'd be a process for annexation and then that city that annex would take on the obligation of dealing with expanding it to four lanes?
Correct. And then that would be like a capital improvement project in the city.
The flip is, if we don't take action on this, or we, we vote against what you're proposing, what are those consequences if we don't take action?
This is Sean Pendley Planning Staff. The consequences of that, if there's no action, first of all, from the planning commission's recommendation here, this is a recommending body, this will move forward. If there's a failure to recommend ultimately, whether it's a, there's not a majority approval or there's just not a motion to approve, it would go forward to the Board of County Commissioners with a failure to recommend. At that point, the Board of County Commissioners could approve anything that's recommended or, or, or any changes thereto, or could remand it back to the planning commission. We have a current adopted carnet plan. So there are, there is an existing carnet map. There could be changes recommended to any part of this from the planning mission, but ultimately this proposal will go forward to the Board of County Commissioners with a recommendation. And the board can choose to adopt in whole or in part any recommendations from the planning commission. But again, reminder, there is a carnet plan adopted today. We're just recommending changes to certain roads that are identified mostly in the west and north areas of the county. Yeah, so it's really just kind of depends on what the specific changes are recommended here.
So whether we take action or not, the Board of County Commissioners will be taking this up?
Board of County Commissioners will have final action on this plan. That's correct.
I think to be clear, then they could, if we, even if we recommended it, they will consider it anew, if you will. And they could reject our recommendation. And they will have a hearing, hearings, I assume?
They would, yes, Mr. Jay Leipzig, what will happen if the, whatever the recommendation is from this body, the, the Board of County Commissioners will either agree with it and affirm it through a vote. Or if they disagree with it, they will remand it back to Um, or if they disagree with it, they will remand it back to this body. And so, um, they have revisited again, which has happened quite often with, with, through the, through the years of zoning board applications. Um, so occasionally you will see that, but yes, this body will make, um, uh, a recommendation that goes to the B O C C. They will either, uh, um, uh, accept that recommendation or they'll remand it back to you for discussion again. Then it goes back to the Board of County Commissioners. The, the other item I was going to say, um, and it's, it's counterintuitive. If you look at the carnup, um, ratings of, of type one through three, if to really protect the rural character, the type three carnup rating is really what protects that rural character. Because you don't have the driveway, it, 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 um, uh, there's great, greater distances for driveway spacing. So you don't have these constant, um, uh, cuts out of the roadway. And so, uh, it, in, in terms of creating the, uh, a thoroughfare through, for traffic, um, that, that higher carnup rating really is what protects the rural character. If you look at a type one, where you can, uh, put a driveway every three hundred and thirty feet, you're going to constantly have, have, have driveways there. Uh, so I, I, I would keep that in mind. It is counterintuitive and it's something that doesn't, it's not readily apparent. But as you kind of think through some of these examples, you can see some of those, those cases, especially if you drive around, uh, or drive through arterial roads that have a lot of curb cuts attached to them. Where you have driveways and, and it is, uh, affects safety of the roadway and the overall, uh, durability of it.
Madam Chair.
Greg Con, oh. Greg.
Go ahead.
Craig Connor, one more question from Public Works following up on what Greg asked earlier. So if De Soto made this, I don't know what you call it, Evening Star, Edgerton Road, uh, four lanes down to one hundred and forty-third street? And the property going south of one hundred and forty-third was still rural? And traffic was, uh, eighteen thousand cars a day per this study here? By twenty sixty, the county would not widen Edgerton? And you said earlier that it had to be annexed by some city to be widened. I don't think that's true. The county can still widen that road, even if it's not annexed, if the traffic's eighteen thousand cars a day, right? For safety?
Um, you know, I'm not sure. I, we haven't encountered that at least.
Yeah, Sean Pendley, planning staff. I am not aware of any arterial road in the unincorporated area as a four lane road. I could be wrong. I'm not aware of any. Generally speaking, as I think Mr. Wolf had asked, is it likely and most likely that any roadway would be improved to a four lane at the four lane level? When it's in a city and it's annexed in the city? That's correct. I don't know of any unincorporated area that has an arterial with the four lane road. Yeah, if the warrants were there, sure, it would be, but the reality is the warrants, what drives the warrants is development. When a development gets to that intensity and that high volume of traffic, it's a city development because it generally can't be supported. The only case I know of, an example might be close to that would be New Century Commerce Center. That area does have high intensity truck traffic with the New Century Commerce Center, but even there, I believe at this time, all of the adjacent arterial roads, Claire Road, one hundred and fifty-ninth Street, North Loop, New Century Parkway are all two lane roads.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Commissioner McGank, I do live on, on, in, on, unincorporated Johnson County on Black Bob Road. And they are widening that to a four lane, uh, type two road. Now that is a city project because on the other side of Black Bob is the city of Alatha. But, I mean, I, I assume the, the county has something to do with, that's who I've had to negotiate with the whole time. So I.
So Black, yeah, Black Bob Road, I believe, south of one hundred and fifty-ninth Street is in our local agreement for a joint city-county project. And the majority of all of those properties that I understand now on the west side of Black Bob Road are now in the city. There are some, I believe, that are still unincorporated, but I think the majority of those now in the city. I don't know the status of that roadway and the, the widening. I knew, I do know it's being improved. I don't know if Scott has any more detail on that, but that's again, what drives it was probably in part new residential development on the west side of Black Bob Road.
Yeah, Commissioner Pedersen, I can tell you, having lived right along Lackman Road there, it was unincorporated. Yes, the city's paying for it to connect Alatha north of one fifty-ninth to Alatha well south of one fifty-ninth, because it was kind of a separated, if you will. But they did make plans and they acquired my frontage, they acquired, you know, some of my fellow commissioners' frontage. You know, it was not annexed at the time they were doing it. It may be annexed now, but it was not at the time. So that's a good example of how that happens.
Mr. Commissioner Richardson, I just want to make sure, did you get, uh, did you want a chance to ask your question?
I do, at the appropriate time. Is this the appropriate time?
Sure.
Well, I'm new to this, this board, but I'm not new to asking questions, so, um, I, I want to express, um, a concern. I've been around this, these carnup plans from the beginning. And, um, I live right on one hundred and ninety-ninth Street. I've seen, uh, I've seen how, um, how that develops and to the point of the commissioner over here are these folks about how long will it take for something to occur? I know when, uh, one of the, uh, one of the nineteen ninety or early two thousand carnup plans, one hundred and ninety-ninth was determined to be over capacity at that time, I think in two thousand and two. It's way, way, way over capacity. Now it's some thirty years later and I think it's going to be addressed, but by the time it's addressed, it'll be another probably four or five years maybe. So these things don't happen instantly. So I don't see a lot of urgency. Uh, if there is an issue that deserves some more consideration. In this case, I'm sitting here listening to these residents say there are sixty-two homes from one hundred and forty-third to fifty-six highway that are going to have significant impacts if this particular, uh, route is, uh, suggested. There are potentially other routes that they've mentioned. Uh, we know there are a lot of driveways in those areas, um, uh, and, and the residents here have illustrated a point that I've seen time and time again, and that is that, you know, um, all zoning is local. And I often hear residents, um, coming forward and saying, you know, uh, uh, the, the county commissioners or the city zoning folks, whatever. Uh, it's kind of steamrolled over us because it is a fact that all zoning is local. The problem is that, uh, most of the time you've got one or two s- city council members for the area that's opposed to it. And the rest of the city doesn't really know much about it. That's a problem you've got on Gardner Road, uh, or, or Edgerton Road. Um, and so, uh, what I would pose to, uh, those of us on this, um, commission before a vote's taken is to whether or not it would not be appropriate to slow this down a little bit for H N T B, certainly one of the most qualified engineering firms that, um, in Kansas City. There's no doubt about that. So they're quite capable of looking at all sorts of ways to, whether it's really reasonable to address this. And I think the county land use plan really says that that's really what we have to do. Because there's a provision in, in the policies that say, uh, county road improvements should minimize possible adverse impacts on adjacent residential properties where practical. And I think that's a mandatory requirement. And I realize some of that has to do with during actual construction and all that, but um, I think it's important for us, when you get to this stage, before we make a recommendation to the county commissioners, to at least pay some attention to the folks that have taken their time and, and energy to come before this group and express their concerns about something where, uh, even the, um, uh, the gentleman from H N T B has said, yeah, we, we haven't looked at alternate alignments. I think my point is really this. Um, there's another provision that says developments should be designed to recognize and minimize the impacts of traffic generated on area roads. I'm not sure that's really happening because when these big developments come in, these big developments, uh, they're desirable, they're going to probably happen. Uh, but not enough time is taken to how you can mitigate the impacts of those things on adjoining landowners. So I think one of the obligations, uh, we as fellow citizens of all these folks, including, you know, recognizing the importance of economic development. If there are, uh, significant areas where people are expressing concerns, I don't think it's appropriate for us to say, well, this is just sort of a plan. It may never happen and we'll address it in the future. Because, uh, when this plan is on paper, it affects their property. And I think whether we change our vote, I may fully support this ultimately, I don't know, but right now, um, I guess my personal view of it is I'd like to see more attention paid to what these folks have brought to the table as to whether or not, um, we should just sort of, uh, you know, ipso facto and adopt this plan and hope that it all gets worked out in the future. That's my, that's where I am on this now. If, that, that's looked at and that this thing says, uh, you know, um, minimize, um, adjacent negative impacts where practical. If, if the end result is there's no way to possibly uh, change anything for the better, then we'll have to consider that too. But I'm not sure as we sit here today with their concerns that, that I'm comfortable just sort of rubber stamping this thing up to the county commission without having a harder look at those particular issues. So I, I don't, I don't have any problem with, um, slowing things down a little bit till that's looked at. And if it's looked at, um, you know, I think, I think we, I think the county and every other governing body owes, when there's enough citizens expressing a general problem for a general area, they really have to take a harder look at it than we have right here. Maybe that nothing changes and maybe that I'll support it, uh, if it comes back that way. But I would feel a whole lot more comfortable voting for this if I knew that, that somebody's taken a look at addressing the issues these folks have.
Yeah, this is Commissioner Gersay. Uh, you know, I, I tend to agree with you, Mr. Richardson. The, my, my initial reaction, I'd be curious, um, to hear from the feedback from my fellow commissioners was either to request a further analysis as to the impacts to the people of alternative routes, um, or to vote to approve the plan with a modification to Edgerton Road to be a type two. So that it's a simple one class move. And it, the carnup plan, based on what I heard from the planning staff, allows for a reevaluation period at some point later, if actually this development isn't even finished. We haven't seen what the traffic is going to look like. A lot of it is predicted models. And I understand it's based on the best, um, best practices, not to be critical of the model. But at some point, you have to see what actual traffic patterns arise. I mean, for example, Mr. Pendley, you pointed out, or maybe it was, uh, Kip, maybe you pointed out, we actually reduced the class of carnup road in some places where actual traffic patterns later Dick, you know, revealed that the traffic patterns were not as severe as once thought. So I think there's a process in the carnup planning that allows for a reevaluation period. So my initial thought was either to wait and I'm not even sure if we're able to request further um, evaluation by H N T B, but if we're not, I would be comfortable voting with a reduction of the entire spread of Edgerton down to a type two.
Madam Chair, Sean Pendley, planning staff, uh, I'm glad you brought this option. So staff has had discussion and we have worked with H N to be on this study for the transportation connection planning carnup. We have not engaged in any further study of any other realignments or any other roads. So we don't feel that there, and we, and we continued the hearing, you know, in September to reevaluate and look at more of the background and the methodology and that, that's what we presented this evening. So we would not feel that there would be any other benefit to reinvest or, you know, reevaluate or further study any other alignments at this time. What would make more sense if the planning commission feels that there's a change or that there's something it would like to do, we would recommend you make a motion to recommend approval with changes to whatever it is. Uh, you know, staff has presented what we feel is the best option here as presented with the type three. But certainly you, the commission, uh, if there's a motion to approve with changes, could certainly do that. And that motion will be carried on to the Board of County Commissioners. Uh, in part of that, uh, that, at that time, the commission can, the Board of County Commissioners can, can consider that, both the recommendation from the planning commission and what staff's initial presentation was. And so, you know, that, that they'd reevaluate that at that time and decide if they would you know, make a decision based on that information or if they'd need to be remanded back for further study.
Uh, thank you so much, Mr. Pendley. Uh, one quick question, just to make sure I understand the basis of your current recommendation. Um, what I heard from Kip from H N T P was that the modeling inputs really only looked at, um, existing traffic data and didn't consider impacts to existing houses or other structures. And I think that's where I hear maybe Mr. Richardson's potential suggestion of an expanded study to see, okay, let's look at current traffic patterns, but if we're going to increase a carnup designation, why not increase, why not look at what are the impacts to the community? That moving from a two lane to a four lane road would have and what would be alternative impacts? And is there a methodology to drive traffic to a road that the impacts to the community would be less? I think that's what I understood Mr. Richardson's proposed expanded study, which I would support, or I would also support, like you said, Sean, a motion to adopt this plan. But for the entirety of Edgerton Road to lower the type, uh, carnup type designation from type three to type two and allow for traffic patterns to actually materialize and consider at any point if that designation was too low based on actual traffic patterns as they materialize over five to 10 years.
Uh, yes, Commissioner Starett, uh, I'm also it kind of intrigued with the idea of, of having a four lane road run into a two lane road. And I understand that could be in twenty sixty. But I think it would seem to me that to, to try to do anything with what's before us now, we're kind of, I'm kind of hearing us say, is there another way to do it? And I don't think we've looked at that. I think we've just taken the nineteen ninety-six plan and said, we'll just write down, it'll be four lane. Am I, am I missing something?
Sean Pendley, planning staff, I, um, no, we didn't just take and follow just the, the original nineteen ninety-nine study. We do evaluate this and we look at the modeling and the traffic volumes every time we do an update. And we certainly looked at those traffic volumes, both current and projected. That's why we recommended keeping it a type three on Edgerton Road. The only change we made was that section between one hundred and forty-third and one hundred and fifty-ninth. So that was the only factor that was not considered. Um, but yeah, we certainly looked at that. We looked at the volumes. Um, that's why we recommended that continuation of the existing type three on Edgerton Road.
Madam Chair, um, Jay Leipzig, just as a quick comment, I, I think, you know, in terms of, I understand in hearing the discussion from Mr. Richardson, Mr. Starett, um, and also the chair about, about looking at, at, at further study and, and review. I think, you know, carnup, it, it's already, it's already in place. And I guess I think, you know, from a, from staff's perspective, if, if this body wishes to, if, if you want to look at uh, reducing Edgerton Road to a type two, uh, I'm not sure if that would be the entire corridor would make sense. I would, I would recommend is keeping what is, what is called for right now existing, where there are changes, moving it, moving that to a type two. Um, that might be a cleaner way to do it, um, an easier way to do it because as, as development proposals come forward, they will be reviewed. Um, anything would have a, it would have a traffic study, would have, they would look at those counts to, to look at if it, if something needs to be adjusted. So, um, you know, there again, carnup is not, it, it's not an alignment study. It's strictly looking, really the, the purpose was to, was to look at reconnecting the roads through um, the, the former Sunflower site, that everything was truncated. And so, um, at a, at a minimum, doing that, uh, but then looking at, you know, how to protect those thoroughfares. So i- if, if something, if, if this, this body should make a recommendation like that, I think that's, that's certainly that, that makes sense to me. I, I don't, I'm, but my Public Works folks, uh, they wish to comment on that too. But that seems like there will be additional studies on that and we can, uh, look at those, at those traffic counts. But that's, that's a cleaner way to do it because if, if additional study will be warranted and as, as development projects go forward, that will happen. Uh, but currently that's not part of the scope of this. And so I guess that just kind of throwing that out there in terms of consideration by this group. I would recommend if, if, if you look at, uh, make your recommendation, just, just altering the pieces that you don't that, which to change, I think would be a, would be a better way to do it.
Uh, Commissioner Gersay, so part of the, um, I appreciate that recommendation, Mr. Leipzig. You always have, uh, excuse me, a good way of kind of phoning in on kind of the issue. I appreciate your, your thoughts. The um, the rationale that I had behind adjusting the entire length of Edgerton is that in 10 years, we haven't seen the traffic that Edgerton Road, the original type three designation called and warranted. And to me, that calls into question whether that original type three was a bit of an overkill. And I guess I, as a commissioner, I, I respect that the fact that every change of carnet designation, even if the road isn't being built for 10, 20, 40 years, it has a day one immediate impact to the property values of the people along Edgerton Road. And so I, I think I'm more of a cautious, let's see if the traffic actually materializes. Um, in, or it's trending that way in a material way to, to warrant such a drastic change that would have an immediate impact on their property values. Uh, does any, um, I'd be curious to hear from any of my fellow commissioners as well.
This is, this is Greg Wolf. Can you put the slide up that shows the difference on like, how many cuts you can have into the street based on type three, type two?
Yeah.
Do you, this is Karen Miller. Do you want street cuts or driveway cuts?
The ones that shows how, how far apart they have to be.
Yeah, the 40 acres, the 20 acres and the 10 acre.
Yes, that one.
Your analysis, Karen.
That was in Karen's presentation. Yes. Okay, so I just want to make sure I understand that right now, except for the part that was in the pink shaded area on Edgerton. If you want to put a, i- it's all type three, right? Except for the shaded area, right? Okay. So if the, the difference would be in, I, the shaded area doesn't have a designation right now. It's a
Well, it, it is actually designated that anything in there could be a type three four lane carnet. The actual particular roads don't, but it is in an area where they're saying that at the time they created that map, they know it's going to be one of them. They just don't know which.
Understood, but there's not a concrete designation there, right? So that's really the one we'd be changing from the current carnet map.
That's Jay's recommendation. Yeah.
Okay, but that wasn't my question. My question is the only thing we would be potentially changing to type three would be the area that's in that pink, pink part, correct?
With, with staff's recommendation, yes, that's correct. The only thing that would be changing on Edgerton Road would be 159th to 143rd, which is two miles.
So just so I'm clear, what you're, uh, what the chair is suggesting is instead of designating the area in the pink as type three, you would say, let's designate that type two, but not change any other existing designations. Is that what you're suggesting?
So my proposed suggestion is actually to adjust all of Edgerton Road to a type two. Both the part that's currently a type one designation that could potentially, that's in that study area. Change that to a type two, so raise that designation and lower the designation that was already there. Because the traffic patterns as, as they have materialized have not warranted the type three designation.
But I don't believe anything's been designated type two in Edgerton Road. Is that correct? Or type one? It, it's either type three or it's in the pink area and it's kind of squishy.
The current carnet map is type three. That would, that's correct.
So I, I, I would have an issue de- changing something from type three to type two because it's harder to go back from type two to type three if you need to do that. So I think that would be a mistake. But I wouldn't have a problem with the concept of in the pink area designating that as type two uh, for purposes of uh, uh, recommending this. But I, I don't think, what I don't want to happen is as progress happens and we've got a huge operation just north of the, or yeah, just north of this. And you see big 18 wheelers needing to drive down that road because it's natural. And they're going to end up on a two lane road. I don't want to miss that opportunity. I've seen a lot of communities do that where they don't want the, and I'm not saying it needs to be on Edgerton Road. But we need to have a plan and options to accommodate that because we're making a big investment in this county to take on the, uh, that battery plant and everything that goes along with it. And I don't want to have 18 wheelers that are in all likelihood going to be on roads, leaving that battery plant, having to go on two lane highways. I don't think that's a, uh, that's a bigger safety issue in my mind. And I'm not saying it needs to be on Edgerton Road, but we have to have our options open because once once we uh, make decisions here, we can't undo them as easily as my, in my opinion, so.
This is Karen Miller and I was, that's exactly the, the idea that I was going to put forth. If you look at this diagram, um, this suggests that perhaps it's better in terms of planning for roads to be a little bit more conservative in terms of calling it a type three instead of a type two. Because you go forward with the type three, and if you look at the 40 acres on a type three, you have one driveway. And if you're, if you're wrong, then you can downgrade it to a type two. And then moving forward, people can further divide their property. But if you miscalculate and um, you make the wrong bet and going forward, you call it a type one when it's really a type two, or you call it a type two when it's really a type three. Then you have these extra driveways, but you have this extra traffic. And it's a lot more difficult to address and the capacity isn't preserved like you could have if you'd been conservative the other way.
Commissioner Poderas, real quick, I have, I have a few questions. Uh, looking at the policy area map, it shows that area as being either rural or rural traditional, which is going to be a minimum lot size of 10 acres, correct? Okay, so
That's correct.
Currently today, the, from the information we were presented, traffic volume is about 800 cars per day on Edgerton Road, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I know we're talking 2060, which is like about 35 years from now, right? 18,000 plus vehicles for 10 acre lots. That doesn't seem, I mean, are we, are we thinking that they're going to connect I-35 at 215th Street? Because I, I, I'm just trying to figure out why we think we're going to have that kind of traffic volume.
I don't think um, that it's generated from the area you're talking about. That's the area that's not getting any sewer. So yeah, we don't anticipate much development in that blue area. I talked about the flood plains there. And so, but the volumes are high because of what's going on at the Astra Enterprise Park. And so it's generating a lot of traffic. I showed you that blue area that was all mixed use. Um, there's already one Panasonic site. They've, at one time they were thinking of another Panasonic site. I don't know where that stands. But yeah, I agree that it's not because of generation in that blue area. It's because of trips generated um, in the Astra Enterprise area that are wanting to go south.
Right, but on the, in your presentation, it shows north of 143rd Street, the traffic volume expected to be between 29,990 to 32,700 and south of 143rd Street, 14,900 to 18,100.
And, and so it's being split, uh,
Right, and it, it moved over at 143rd.
Sunflower and Edgerton. Uh, Sunflower is um, very desirable because it's a straighter connection to the Homestead interchange. Oh, I'm sorry, Four Corners. You're right. Four Corners, thank you. Uh, it's just a better connection to the interstate. So I think it does draw some cars. So that what's into Soto going southbound is kind of split, not 50/50, but there's a, there's um, some that stay on Edgerton because it's a direct straight south. Um, and then some take 143rd over to Four Corners.
But, but since there's no connection from Edgerton Road to I-35.
Right. They would have to take 56 over to the east.
Yeah.
Doesn't connect I-35 either. It ends at the intermodal.
Right, you have to, you have to work your
You go over on 199th, right?
Yeah, it's not a direct connection.
But, but it's a better connection.
It's a better connection.
Okay, so what, are you expecting tractor trailers to be driving down Edgerton Road?
Well, the, the study didn't get into the, the truck ball, truck forecast and things.
So you didn't, you didn't take into account vehicle type?
Um, it, uh, right, we just know the total vehicles and not the vehicle type.
Okay, so is there some kind of housing development expected or already in the works that we aren't aware of? That might be driving some of these suspected or, or I should say, expected traffic volumes on Edgerton Road?
Like I said, I don't think it's that much traffic is being generated along Edgerton Road. I think it's being generated up in the Astra Enterprise area.
Okay.
Um, the amount of development in the unincorporated area, I, I think I classified it as low intensity. Yeah.
Okay.
We, we assumed 10 acre lots would stay 10 acre lots. Um, we didn't assume those would be subdivided.
Okay, so it sounds like traffic volume is not expected to really climb that much uh, south of 143rd Street on Edgerton Road. So perhaps the best of both worlds then, instead of arguing over should it be type three or type two? Maybe we should go from a type three four lane to a type three two lane.
Well, I think that's a good point because, right, going from a type three four lane to a type two four lane is just adding more driveways.
Right, you, you maintain your safety margin there.
Right.
And you don't take out all these houses messing with the front edge and, and the rights of way and all that. So perhaps a type three two lane would be a good compromise.
And if you do that, we're just saying, hey, we think the traffic volumes are going to be higher than a two lane in 2060. Um, you know, based on the land use scenario, we, we're projecting that a two lane would not work.
Well, and the, the type three two lane says uh, traffic volume between 7,500 and 30,000.
Yeah.
So in theory
1,000, I think is
Yeah, if, if you're forecasting 18,000, that would be in the range, right?
I'm sorry, in what range?
So according to the diagram here, type three two lane, traffic volume is between 7,500 and 30,000 daily.
Mm-hmm.
And if you're forecasting 18,000 and change, that would work on a type three two lane.
Um, it would fall within that range, but I think you'd have some congestion and capacity problems.
Yeah, it probably, it would probably depend on traffic control devices. Are we dealing with four way stops, lights, roundabouts, whatever? But, you know, I, I, I think we'd be able to better maintain the rural character and these folks' houses.
That, Sean Penley, planning staff, that's certainly an option. That is again, another suggested change could be made is that the type designation of carnet, you would want to specify the type. But that is another option, a type three two lane would be a, a difference there that might make that uh, adjustment. That still allows for the capacity and it, and it still allows for limited driveway access. But it does downgrade from the four lane to a two lane. That's, that's another option.
Right, in that case, I might suggest between 215th up to 143rd, a type three two lane. That would maintain the, you know, a good compromise, I think.
I think, and this, Madam Chairman Rod Richardson, I, after listening to this, I think, yeah, that's, that, obviously we have some options here. Um, and clearly there is ample time between now and 30 years from now to adjust. That's why we're adjusting now. But I like the suggestion the commissioners made. Uh, the type three two lane would appear to uh, solve the concern about three versus two and, but give us the two lanes, solve the driveway problem and address uh, you know, reasonably addressed concerns that have been brought up by the neighbors that don't like four length. So it seems like a reasonable approach.
Yeah, Commissioner Gersay, I'm mindful of Commissioner Wolf's kind of expertise and his experience in other commissions. Um, and you know, obviously there's a balancing act that we have to do with trying to look ahead to make sure of the driveway situation and not kind of paint ourselves into a corner while still recognizing that these type of changes do have a day one immediate impact on property values, even if we have road construction that's happening 20 to 30 years from now. So I actually think that's a beauty, a very elegant compromise of a type three, type three two lane road, which would maybe address Mr. Wolf's concerns about the driveway cuts. But um, help make sure that there's only a two lane road uh, approval on those roads and that would still maintain that rural character.
It's the same right of way requirement. If you don't get that, it's the same right of way. You're still going to be on that front door.
This is Commissioner Connell. Yeah, I, I was going to point out the right of way is the same with this type or two lane or four lane for type three, still 200 feet. Also, a type three road, I think can be 55 miles an hour.
Sean Penley, planning staff, Madam Chair, yeah, if I could just elaborate. Again, um, just by designating it, whatever, whether it's type two, type three, two lane, four lane, nothing would change. The only time it would change for a right of way designation is if and when a property is subdivided. So if somebody were to plat and subdivide their property at that time, right of way dedication would be required. There is no plan to acquire a right of way. It's just usually what we use that for in the implementation is we use carnet in the implementation of our zoning regulations when somebody's looking to subdivide. So when a new plat comes in or new development, that's when the right of way dedication would occur. And only then would the right of way dedication be needed. And or if in someday in the future, the roads need to be improved, but right of way could be acquired if needed. But there is no current need now, only when people are subdividing their property.
Commissioner Gersay, um, uh, please make me smarter on this. When, when there's a right of way required for this, does that mean that that land is consumed? Or is it just meaning that you can't build a house within that right of way?
The, the right of way dedication, when required, would be dedicated for public right of way for future street improvements. Only dedicated at that time of plating. It would be reserved for future roadway improvements or utilities or anything else associated with that. But again, that right of way dedication only happens when a property is subdivided.
Uh, just a follow up question, um, kind of educating me on the difference between an easement and a right of way. If at some point in the future, you know, 20, 30 years, whenever the, there's money to fund a project like this, if there's a right of way on a type three two lane road and there was a house within that right of way, would that house be required to be removed? Or how would that work?
Yeah, if an actual house was located in public right of way, it would need to be removed. But I don't, not aware of any situation where there's any homes in right of way or even future right of way. I don't know. Uh, there's, often there's an issue regarding setbacks, but
Okay, I, I just, I just want to, maybe that's not as a a solution, you know, because originally I was thinking that that might be a lovely solution. But if the end result is that you're on, you have a right of way to somebody's front door, I don't know that that solves the issue. Um, but keep brainstorming.
So this is, this is Greg Wolf again. So I guess my question is, would it be the most efficient way to go about this is to have staff and your consultant come back to us with the proposed modification of type three two lane and explain to us pros and cons? Because we kind of caught you on the fly here. I get that. And, and I, I want to make sure if we make a recommendation, it's, it's well thought out from your end. Um, but it seems to me that's a reasonable, um, it's a reasonable uh, conclusion to this issue. But I want to make sure we're not missing something here and we, you've had all 10 minutes to think about it.
No, Sean Penley, planning staff, I don't want to speak for all departments here, but I would say that that, that change, if it was proposed to be revised from a type three four lane to a type three two lane, that would work. Again, we do evaluate these as needed and as was mentioned before, we certainly could always revisit that. I don't know if there'd be any value in us going back and continuing this again to come back with any other options because we'd still recommend the same again. Um, but yeah, it makes sense, I think, for me, from my standpoint in planning. The changes from a type three four lane to type three two lane, because again, we still preserve that. What we're wanting to do really is to limit the number of new driveways. That's the key and that accomplishes that as well. Um, I don't think there'd be any need to revisit that or investigate that further. But again, that's just our position in planning.
Greg Connell, so I guess I'm going to tap on to Mr. Richardson's comments about timing here. Um, I know we have this 25 year history, I guess, of carnet having this corridor kind of outlined place. But I think we just step back and say, is this, is this still the right place for the corridor? And I think when you look at economics, property acquisition and, you know, where the waterways are, that sort of thing. And look at maybe from Sunflower all the way to 2200 Road in Douglas County, there's about a four mile span there. That seems to me hasn't been looked at thoroughly, probably in 25 years, probably when this That seems to me hasn't been looked at thoroughly, probably in twenty-five years, probably when this was first designated as a corridor. And I'd like to see us step back and re-study that from an economic perspective, what's feasible engineering-wise and what would cost.
Uh, Commissioner Garcia, I guess, kind of maybe piggybacking on that comment. Um, for an unincorporated area to have such a drastic, um, new development that really, we don't know about the number of employees and traffic loading yet. And it seems like the level of investigation that's been done to make the current suggestion, while good, was rather limited even by Kipsoon admission. And I'm just wondering with this type of, maybe it would seem like a potential drastic change, that maybe additional study into the alternatives, um, presented would be warranted? And, and I think, I think as commissioners, we could vote to direct the planning staff, um, to do that additional investigation. I hear that, that would, um, your recommendation may lie on the same, but maybe we as commissioners would have more information to make a more reasoned vote?
I think, um, Madam Chair Jay Leipzig, I think what you're suggesting would be, um, essentially a failure to recommend. I think, uh, and I understand that the, the rationale for that, uh, the, that type of study, though, what you're talking about, like a, a feature, as we talked about, you know, carnet is not an alignment study. So if we're actually looking at an alignment study, that's a separate scope altogether. I guess I would, I, I think of a, and again, it's my opinion. I think if you were to, to look at carnet with, we talked about with this, um, uh, uh, type, type three two lane, uh, that's, that is something that is, is, is workable. I think as, as the multiple proposals come forward, they're going to be evaluated and reviewed anyway with traffic studies, and we'll get additional traffic counts. I think that, that is, and it could be certainly part of the recommendation, is an additional scope study would be to look at, um, alignments or future, but I think the area does need to be studied. You know, if you look at, and actually, the, the impetus for this entire discussion tonight was, was, really was Panasonic. It kind of came out of the blue, and that, that's an extreme example of the type, the type of development project that, that has a tremendous impact. Uh, ninety percent of the others, we're not going to have that, that level of, of impact on, on our local roads. But because of that, everything's changed. And so maybe as a secondary scope, um, we, we do need to look at that, that alignment. But that's, that's something, um, I, I don't think you could recommend planning staff look at that, that we direct planning staff to look at that. That's something the Board of County Commissioners will have to look at and, and allocate funding for, uh, for that, that type of study. Um, unless someone in Public Works wants to chime in, but that's my, my opinion.
Yeah, Commissioner Garcia, that, that was one of my kind of questions was, I, I understand that would be a whole different scope of work for HNTB. And so would that additional scope of work be something that we would have to get approval from the Board of County Commissioners to approve the funding of that study? Or, um, and so it'd be a failure to recommend with a request for additional funding for the study? Or, so I guess to my fellow commissioners, that's kind of the question before us is, do we do have a failure to recommend with a proposal for future study? And run potentially the risk that the planning commission just approves the plan as, you know, as suggested? Or do we go ahead and vote on a potential plan right now that you would feel comfortable with, with a request for that future scope allocation in the future? So to me, those are the maybe two questions before, but I'd be open to other suggestions.
Madam Chairman, um, I feel very strongly that the latter is a better choice for us. I think a failure to recommend essentially would give the Board of County Commissioners free hand to say, well, we're not doing that, and, uh, we will have accomplished nothing, uh, looking at the issues these folks have brought forward. I think, uh, I think Commissioner's, uh, suggestion that you described as an elegant solution, uh, doesn't give the residents exactly everything they're hoping for, but we're, we're talking about a plan, not an, an actuality. It seems to me that the best position we could take here, warts and all, it's not perfect, would be to approve, uh, type three two-lane road, even though it raises some right-of-way issues. But those right-of-way issues wouldn't have to be addressed for who knows how long, if ever. Uh, and future studies might indicate no need for that at all. Um, so, uh, you know, my hope would be that, uh, that, uh, the commissioners would consider that a, a, a victory, uh, rather than risking going to the county commissioners and having them just simply ignore the issue, and we never, you know, we haven't accomplished anything.
Yeah, Commissioner Garcia, that, that's kind of my inclination, and I think a failure to recommend essentially wipes away all the work that has been done and all the analysis that's been done. And to me, I'd rather vote on an imperfect plan that, um, you know, addresses, you know, some of the recommendations that I heard from, you know, Becky, Doug, Paul, Krista, appreciate your comments tonight. Um, but it's not an ideal, perfect plan, what they're asking. It's not exactly what the planning staff was recommending. It's a imperfect compromise. At least I would be comfortable voting for something like that tonight, but I'm curious about my fellow commissioners' opinions.
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion. Um, I move that the planning commission recommend the Board of County Commissioners adoption of the attached amendments to the comprehensive plan regarding updates to the comprehensive arterial road network plan and additions regarding housing options with the following amendments. One, that the Edgerton Road, uh, be changed from type three four lane to type three two lane, and to remove the, uh, part that is not developed, uh, which is the future type one designation along one hundred and nineteenth street west of Astra Enterprise Park on the carnet map.
Yeah, Commissioner Garcia, I would second that motion, um, with a, just a clarity that the entirety of Edgerton Road is that, uh, type three two-lane designation?
Correct.
Okay, just, I just wanted clarification. Yes, Commissioner Garcia, I would vote in favor of that.
Uh, point of order, uh, she, Sean Pendley Planning Staff, uh, if Mr. Wolfe could, uh, clarify again, the location from Edgerton Road, from which street to which street?
So it would be from one hundred and forty-third, I believe, uh, south, correct?
Correct.
Yes.
To two hundred and fifteenth, all the way through the.
All the way to two hundred and fifteen, yes, to the, to the county line.
Is it, what? As a type three two lane?
Correct.
Correct, okay.
Yeah. Just for clarity, would you mind remaking the motion with the, uh, with the clarification on the streets?
I move that the planning commission recommend the Board of County Commissioners adoption of the amendments to the comprehensive plan regarding updates to the comprehensive arterial road network plan and additions regarding housing options as submitted by staff, including removing the future type one designation along one hundred and nineteenth street west of Astra Enterprise Park on the carnet map, and designating Edgerton Road from one hundred and forty-third street south to two hundred and fifteenth street as type three two lane.
Uh, Commissioner Garcia, I would second that motion.
No, you changed nothing. You, you listened to us and you changed nothing. We still have the right-of-way. We still have you on our drive and on our front porch. And now on top of it, we're not even going to be able to sell our land in anything but, uh, what was it, a twenty or forty or acre parcel at a time?
Sir, sir, I appreciate.
You didn't, you didn't compromise on a damn thing. You just changed some, some letters.
Yeah, and I apologize that that's how you feel. And again, we're trying to find a compromise here. Um, I believe, yes, we did. Thank you for your comments. Uh, is there any other seconds to the motion?
I, I certainly want, intend to support it. Uh, I think it's a good compromise. It isn't a perfect compromise. I think, uh, I think the residents need to understand it's highly likely the county commissioners would fully support, uh, uh, you know, the original concept of this plan. I think we're sending a strong message that reflects the concern you folks have had. Um, I, uh, just as an aside, live on, uh, on one hundred and ninety-ninth street, which is a type four, four-lane divided highway under this particular, uh, under the existing carnet plan. And nobody has any trouble selling any land along there for a lot of money. So I, I, I would guess probably that would be true in your case as well. Uh, I support, uh, certainly support this, and I think, I think the county commissioners will understand the rationale for this, and I think they'll consider it's a good move. I only have one question, if I might, Madam Chairman, to staff, um, to, uh, Mr. Leipzig or to either one of you. When this, if, if this passes, if this passes, and we make this recommendation to the county commissioners, will staff support this recommendation?
Um, yes, Commissioner Richardson, staff would support that recommendation.
Okay, thank you. That's it.
Craig Connell, Chairman, I have one, I'd like to amend the motion, if I can, to include a recommendation that the county fund a study to evaluate if this is the proper, um, expressway or whatever corridor that we want for the north-south traffic, still to this day, from, recommendation is twenty years old.
I have no objection to the amendment.
Uh, I, I fully support the amendment as well, and likewise, I will personally advocate for members of the commission to fund that type of study, um, as it will provide us additional information that we can always revisit the carnet plan with those additional, um, considerations when they become available. Do you support the amendment?
I, I will support the amendment, yes. I think that's appropriate.
Uh, still have one question, and that is, when this is forwarded to the county commissioners, will your, the, the original recommendation of staff go along with our amended recommendation?
Uh, Sean Pendley Planning Staff, make sure I understand that amendment. Uh, who would, who would fund the study at what time, for what location?
So since it was my motion, I'll elaborate. The, the amendment is to recommend to the Board of County Commissioners that, that Board, the county funds a study to determine whether Edgerton Road is the right thoroughfare that, um, will go north-south as the study discusses.
Commissioner Wolfe, um, I would say, yes, that's, I understand that. I think the, um, uh, the Board of County Commissioners will certainly, if, if that's attached as a motion, that will certainly be there as well. They, I think, you know, um, they're, and I can't speak for them, but they're going to look at appropriating funds out of the budget somewhere.
Yep.
Um, that might be, I think you, even having it as a, uh, recommend that that study be included, um, uh, you, you don't want to be, uh, was that, because then it sound like in order to, to approve, to approve the carnet plan, um, they have to approve that study as well.
These are, these are two separate recommendations.
Separate recommendations.
Yes.
Uh, so maybe two separate motions or recommendations?
Well, you can have two recommendations in a motion, so that's not a problem.
I think something like that would work. I, and I, I just don't know, as we're getting ready to go into the budget process for next year, this certainly is, is timely, so they'll look at those, those items as they, as, as we, um, begin to prepare the budget for the twenty twenty-seven year, so.
So just to clarify, my, you know, under Robert's rules of orders, they could accept both recommendations. They could accept one recommendation, either one, or they could reject both of them. That's certainly their, is, that's certainly the Board of County Commissioners', uh, right to do.
Yes, that is correct, Commissioner.
So I think, I, I would, I would ask to call the vote at this point.
Okay.
You'd call the, yeah.
Yes, so I would just say, um, all in favor of the proposed, uh, motion by Commissioner Wolfe with the two recommendations. One, addressing, um, adoption of the carnet plan with the suggested revisions that Mr. Wolfe made. Uh, the second recommendation would be a request by the county commissioners to fund a study looking at proposed alternative routes and the impact to the community, um, considering the impact to the community of the proposed routes. All in favor?
Uh, Madam Chair, sorry, one last thing to make clarification here as a staff. Uh, I've talked with the interim Public Works Director, Tamara Lorenzen. There is currently no budget for any further study, and this has not been included in the approved budget. So I'll just caution, we could certainly include this amendment, it could go forward to the board, but just know that there is no budget for this additional study, and likely, uh, staff, you know, wouldn't be recommending that. So going back again to the recommendation, what staff would support, so staff does support the change to carnet plan, but we would not support any further study. Just for clarification, we could carry this forward with that recommendation. We just know that that's a whole separate issue, this further study.
Understood.
Yeah.
Um, maybe we could do a roll call vote, uh, for clarity of purpose?
Yeah, absolutely. Gregory Wolfe.
Aye.
David Paderas.
Aye.
Lindsay Garcia.
Aye.
Brad Starrett.
Aye.
Stephen McGank.
Aye.
Leslie Hind was on Zoom. She is no longer on Zoom, so we will not include her. Craig Connell.
Aye.
Andrew Logan.
Abstention.
And Rod Richardson.
Aye.
Okay, so the motion passes, and, um, again, appreciate the comments, um, from the community. Um, I understand there's both some happiness, some disappointment, and I, um, feel for both sides. Um, we tried to appropriately consider it, and certainly more investigation, we believe it would be warranted, and we will advocate on that behalf. Thank you.
Um, Madam.
Oh, sorry.
Yeah. There is.
To happen.
Yes, uh, thank you, Madam Chair, Sean Pendley Planning Staff. We will continue on with the items, but also just to note, this item will be heard by the Board of County Commissioners at the meeting on December eleventh at nine thirty AM for final consideration. Thank you.
Okay, um, maybe we could quickly move, um, and I, and I assume that we're okay on time. Um, I think the election of officers is next on the agenda.
Yes, Madam Chair, I'm Jay Leipzig. I would propose that we, that we delay that election until we get in our, in our regular room and we have full attendance. So I think would be, would be probably less disruptive and a better time to do that, if, if this board is in agreement with that as well.
I, I totally support that, as long as my fellow commissioners do.
Aye.
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 Thank you. Um, uh, director's report, Mr. Leipzig?
Uh, in, in the spirit of keeping our comments brief, the, the actual, the director's report, everything is on your agenda in terms of the update. Uh, I would just suggest if you do have questions, please reach out to us. That's, that is, we, we did have, um, our, our neighborhood meetings for, um, subdivision regulations update. Uh, and it's fairly self-explanatory, but if you, if you do have questions, please reach out to us. There's also a review, um, uh, of all of the cases that were heard by the zoning boards, um, over the last, last month as well. And then the last time I, I wanted to note is that the month of October is National Community Planning Month, which they recognized, uh, a month by the American Planning Association. We do have a, have a proclamation and a, a certificate from the, signed by the Board of County Commissioners in recognition of that. So just something that, that, to raise awareness about Planning Month, you know, and, and to hear these, these kind of discussions this evening really emphasizes that, that it's, it's, the, the planning in Johnson County is very intentional. And you can see it when you drive in other areas in the country that are not as well-planned, and you have, you have curb cuts on, on roads. And so you can see the, the organized land use development and how important that is, um, and, and how strong that, that development is in Johnson County. I've opened it up. John, anything to add to the report?
But that concludes my part of it.
Oh, yeah, thank you, Jay, uh, Sean Pendley. I would just, uh, add, for that update, the only other update we were mentioning was the recent open house meetings we have for the zoning and subdivision regulations. Those weren't very well. We had three different open house meetings on October seventh, eighth, and ninth. Uh, and those are located in Gardner, Olathe, and Stillwell. Uh, got good impact, um, input and feedback from the public regarding the first draft of the zoning regulations for the module one. We will be presenting an update to the planning commission as well. We also had a meeting with our advisory committee and had additional feedback. We would like to ask, we had planned to possibly bring an update at the next meeting in November, but we did want to ask is generally if there's, uh, any potential conflicts. That meeting, that scheduled meeting is November twenty-fifth, the week of Thanksgiving, so the Tuesday night before Thanksgiving. If there are conflicts and we don't, if there's going to be a, uh, some absences, we may just cancel that meeting and continue it to the next regularly scheduled meeting, which would be on December sixteenth. So we did want to get some feedback from the planning commission about schedules, and if there's any potential impacts in that meeting for December twenty, or for November twenty-fifth. And then we'll make a decision on when to provide that update to the planning commission.
Um, Commissioner Garcia, my fellow commissioners, do you have any conflicts on the twenty-fifth, um, or if it's November?
I have a conflict. This is Greg Wolfe.
Yeah, Andrew Logan, I have a conflict.
I, I, I would suggest then we cancel that meeting, um, but right before Thanksgiving, um, and reschedule, and just utilize the December meeting as we suggest.
Staff would be happy to do that. I think that's right. I think we are going to have trouble on that, that Tuesday of, uh, Thanksgiving week. So we'll plan on canceling the meeting on November twenty-fifth, have a regularly scheduled meeting on December sixteenth, and we'll provide an update on the draft zoning regulations at that time. Thank you.
Thank you. And as Commissioner Garcia, I just want to thank you again to the staff, um, Kip and to public works for making themselves available tonight to kind of get peppered with questions and kind of get creative with potential compromises. Uh, I speak on behalf of the commission, my fellow commissioners that we're grateful for your professionalism and your knowledge and always grateful for your assistance.
Here, here.
Um, any old business, new business? Hearing none. Uh, can I get a motion to adjourn? Uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, and we will see you in December.
So, December sixteenth, right?
Yeah.